Just.
All ears, no test, test.
Okay, yes, oh, yeah.
Now you go.
It'd be good.
Yeah, okay.
So, thank you, thanks.
You're welcome.
Just.
A pleasure.
All right.
You're good.
Okay, Commissioner, we will start again for the recording.
All right.
This is our work session. Today's Monday, October twenty, twenty twenty five. I'm Commissioner Bowleson with Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Frewer. Our first item is a discussion and our action for approval of the minutes for the commissioning sessions held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair. Second?
All in favor?
All right.
I motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Item two is a discussion regarding a private road within a public right-of-way covenant between the county and luxury at the Legends subdivision Rick Rover, Sean Wilkinson, Liam Keel, Charlie Uwer, Tucker Wade. Yes.
I'll be doing a quick presentation on that, just a rundown. So, the map I have up, it shows the general location roughly seven hundred north, thirty-six hundred west. And this, this road happens to be a terminal street for the time being. However, we are anticipating some additional development coming in. There was recently a subdivision that was approved just to the east of this property called the Lowman View. And what is, I guess, what the today's request would be to have this on the consent agenda for next week. And what exactly this is, it's a covenant. And so, the Weaver County, we have in code a means for developed properties like this to develop. In, and in this case, it would be a temporary private street to access this property. The reason it's temporary is because, for one, it doesn't meet the required sixty-foot width that we need for a street. And it does not have asphalt improvements. So, we would not take on this street as a public street at this time. However, the, the way that the property is situated in alignment with the general plan, future streets and transit map, this property aligns very well with our, our future street alignments that are coming into play. So, we thought it's, it's a really good opportunity for us to not only acquire this property for future roads purposes, but also allow the developer to plot this as a two-lot subdivision for to, for his purpose, purposes today. And he would be using this access strip as his private access for the time being. The land under his access strip is deeded to the county. The, the, all the improvements and the, you know, the, the underground improvements that he's run to, to his property, those would remain private. And under the control, maintenance, construction responsibility of the private landowner until the county assumes responsibility for it. And so, that's really what this agreement is. And so, what, what I was thinking is putting it, I was gonna put it on the agenda for possibly next Tuesday. And maybe the consent agenda, if, if, if it's appropriate. And, and we can get it approved that way. This, this is a private road within a public right-of-way covenant. And so, I'll make sure to get that, a copy to each of you. You can take a good look at it. Really, what this does is it, it was created by Cortland Erickson for a way for us to allow development of this nature. And it, it does require approval from, from the county commission body. And, and so, going on the next slide, we can actually see the surrounding development that's, that we're expecting to come online. As far as how quickly, when, I'm not sure. They, they have approval to rezone this property, and there is a development agreement. And so, you can see that the street systems within the Lowman View will utilize this, the street route running straight north off of thirty-six hundred west. And then you have that road that goes in an east-west direction. That one is seven hundred North Street. I can probably just put my cursor on it. So, this road right here, running in an east-west direction, would be seven hundred north. And then this one would be a continuation of thirty-six hundred west. And so, that's what Planning Division is, is anticipating. And here is an overlay of the future streets and transit map from the Western Weaver General Plan on top of the, the, the land in, in question. And you can clearly see that we do have some planned roads, some roads alignments through here. And so, county staff feels like this is a good opportunity. And, and going on to what this agreement really talks about, it talks about the private nature of this street as, as temporary. It also puts responsibility for maintenance, construction, and use on the private landowner at this time. And it also requires that the subdivision plat deed parcel A to the county. Parcel A in this case is the access strip. The access strip being, let me go back. Being this really long, this, this little strip of land, it's thirty feet wide. And it runs straight north to this point. And so, length on that is roughly sixteen hundred feet. And so, one other thing I'd like to mention, this subdivision plat, it plats out one lot here and one lot right here. And it also dedicates thirty-three feet pri, I'm sorry, public right-of-way along this edge for set, the continuation of seven hundred north.
So, may I, Madam Chair? The way you see it, then, this group, as planners, you see this with that eventual growth out there that we wouldn't have any problem. What about if, if during construction they wanna use a little bit of that private road to move tradesmen in and out of there or potential residents in and out of there before that road gets finished paving? And who's responsible for all those questions? Who's responsible for the paving or that, cause of that road? This is something we've been talking about for years now. And so, I wanna just make sure we're absolutely protected on this and not have to go through any more of these fights that we've gone through in the past, you know, or disagreements. This is important.
And the developer that's abutting this, he would have to pick up the additional and he'd have to do the installation and those requirements associated with that. And then if there's anything special spelled, spelled on the development agreement, then Mr. Cord, is it?
Yeah, Core Valentine.
He'd have to be responsible for a portion of it as well. But that would be spelled out in the development agreement.
What if he's not ready to do that and the other person is?
Yeah, I, how it's worded in there is it's up to the county to determine, and he's giving those rights as part of this subdivision with that agreement. So, when the county wants to pull the trigger, then he has to abide by those.
Okay.
Misses, as it stands right now, on the west side of that red strip, the hipwells are looking at dedicating twelve or so feet of right-of-way to the county. And then you've got that thirty-foot red strip that you're looking at. So, what is that, forty-two feet, if you're looking at the twelve feet? And we're looking at that being a total of a hundred-foot right-of-way for the future. So, the Lowman View development, assuming that all of this goes the way that we hope it does, they'll be responsible for the remaining hundred feet. And Lowman View is already on the hook for all of the curb gutter, asphalt, and pathway that is to the east of the red line. And then everything to the west of the red line there would be on either this landowner or on the hipwells when they develop their land. Which is very likely just going to be sidewalk and street trees, if even that.
Any questions?
Yeah, so, let's talk about the, I have no problem with private road. I just wanna make sure we have the agreement. And when you say that parcel A deed, does it, how many feet does that give us? Does that give us the distance we need width-wise for a future public road?
It gives us part of it. So, what it gives us right now is what the, what the owner, what he owns.
Okay, which is how many feet?
It's thirty feet wide.
Okay.
And then the strip is sixteen hundred feet long. But also, this portion is being dedicated. This is dedicated public right-of-way.
So, seven hundred north, we got dedicated.
Yeah.
A portion, yeah, okay.
A half width.
So, we're dependent on, is it the west, is the hipwells on the west?
Yeah, hipwells will do a bit there, and then the majority, the other half will be on this side.
Okay, so, what happens again if hipwells don't want to dedicate theirs?
Yeah, and we would still have enough for a sixty-six foot right-of-way.
I guess that's where I was asking.
Yeah, and so, that sixty-six foot, we, we could still get the, the necessary improvements to still have a very nice.
So, bottom line, we have sixty-six feet.
Yes.
If we have hipwells, we could have up to a hundred feet. Is that correct? Which is the preferred, but a sixty-six is a standard. I mean, that's a conforming road.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we don't end up with a non-conforming or that it costs money to get that extra thirty-three feet.
And if we do get that hundred feet, there's a whole bunch of area to the south of thirty-six hundred that we'll be focusing on at some point in the long future, cause I think right now the county probably only had sixty-six for the rest of that.
Yeah.
Significantly less, but better to get that from the developers who are looking at developing now, the hipwells, this gentleman and Lowman View, so that we don't have to have taxpayers pay for those strips of people's front yards in the future.
Yeah.
So, is seven hundred north al- already connected?
No. Seven hundred north only exists for about, I don't know, it's probably a hundred feet over to the west of here.
So, that will be dedicated to the county?
Uh, yeah, so.
So, our road will only be accessed by a private road?
Maintenance. Sorry, no, it's actually, so, seven hundred to thirty-three foot half width. This developer will just be dedicating, not installing that, right? He's not installing.
Okay.
Seven, this developer is responsible for escrowing and installing seven hundred. Now, he's gonna have to install both his, his side and his side in the future. And then he'll need to install at least the thirty feet on, or, so, Lowman View guys will need to install at least thirty feet on his property. And then the thirty feet, thirty-three feet south of that here is gonna be a, a different development, which, right, right now, the landowners, I don't think they're, they're having conversations with a developer. I don't know how far along they are.
Okay, that is certainly.
Long-term, seven hundred is expected to go all the way to forty-seven hundred west.
Do you have other questions, Commissioner?
We'll come on. I'm good.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the explanation.
Good work.
All right, we'll change out the room. We're almost on time considering our alley issues.
And draft it is. I think we should use this for.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I assume you can get on down. Yes, it is sensitive, but.
Okay.
Where are you at us?
Right there.
Just emotional support.
I was like, we're getting more than we bargained for here. Okay, Commissioner, item three on our agenda, discussion regarding transferring found unclaimed property to agency. Use at Sheriff's Office. Kaylee Jake, was it Kaylee? Yeah, Jacobson, Ryan Mead, Darcy Hanson.
She's not here.
Okay, is she not?
This is Darcy.
Yeah, no, he's us today.
All right. We're ready. You're first, Kaylee. That means you're speaking.
Okay.
Unless you wanna defer.
It doesn't matter. We're looking to transfer some unclaimed funds from the evidence room to a public interest. We had to follow state law, seventy-seven eleven D one oh five. And we had to get commission approval to transfer those funds from the evidence room to a public interest.
Plus, you guys get input of what we do with the money, if you wish. It's your prerogative. So.
How much money?
Uh, currently on the books, we have five thousand and some change of unclaimed, found, abandoned money.
This is just currency.
This is just currency. We haven't ever done, yeah, we haven't done this in probably over.
That was gonna be my next question.
Twenty years, so it's.
I was gonna say, not in last nine years. I've never seen that. I was just sitting there like.
Yes. And then we have another twenty-one thousand dollars in proceeds from gun sales to Heimike. We had a contract with Heimike. Yeah, I believe you're the one that signed it. That contract's now expired. So, we're wanting to convert that money also to public use.
I don't understand. Okay, I know what cash is, and I know what the sale of things to Heimikes are. What's public use? What, what line item is that?
The state statute allows you guys, if you guys have a special charity or some kind of cause you guys want this money go to, you can, you have a say. If not, then we go to our sheriff. He has a say in it. If not, then it comes back to us and we could buy more stuff early. So, it doesn't have to go to unclaimed properties at the state, state treasures? No, this was, this was money either taken off somebody who no, no longer is here or claimed it or it's found abandoned currency. Lots of times we find currency at the, like, the fair, for example. It's been sitting in our evidence room for years and years and years. Yeah. And, and now we'd like to just convert it into do something good with it.
I'm glad to see him cleaning that up.
Yes, for sure.
Commissioner, the last time we did something like this, we put the proceeds, this was from unclaimed properties through forfeitures that we couldn't tie anyone to. We used that to go towards the acquiring the dog.
Yeah, that was mentioned. Yes.
Yeah, and that was several years ago. We could pull that resolution as an example. But in that one, we identified a particular use for the funds to go to.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
We're saving a bit now, he's on that list.
I think you probably could hold it in the nerve, have, just have it put in a special account, restricted account. And until you identify what use you want it to be.
That's be my only, that's, so we don't have to go down rattle on that. Yeah, that'd be why.
Put it in escrow, a reserve.
Put it in a reserve and.
Yeah.
We give some thought to work.
I think you, and you know, put somebody out there and say, give us some recommendations, and we could evaluate the recommendations like we do with a lot of our funds. Sure. Yeah, that's what I was.
Good idea.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. Okay. So, what do we need, Liam?
Motion be on your agenda next week, and it can be a consent item, if you want, whatever you want.
Perfect.
Just indicating that you're approving it to be used for a public purpose.
Sounds like a commission recap video.
It's a recap, yeah.
Doesn't it? Let's, let's know what we do there. Okay, will you do that resolution? Have you already done it?
I haven't done it yet, but I will.
Okay. Any questions?
No, good catch. I didn't realize you didn't have to just go back to the state with it. That's. Yeah, it's, 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 it's because it falls under the evidence. Okay, sound like if you make a drug bust, you got a bunch of cash in there, you guys get to take and buy guns with it, whatever you want. Well, sometimes, well, we had that kind of money for, under a different code for forfeitures. But if they take the gun or they take the money for evidence of drug dealing, then it makes it to our arena to where it's up to the county attorney. If they have a say, where it goes. Does that make sense? This is just found abandoned. Trying to get it out of your cash box.
Yes, that's good, that's good, that's good to get those corners swept. I like that. Thank you.
Great, all right.
Good.
Well, you don't necessarily need to come next Tuesday, but you can, if you, well, actually, you probably should. We'll probably have you do a video afterward. Oh, and it's just kind of interesting. I don't know. We just picked one agenda item or two each week. I think this would be an interesting one.
That works.
You probably shouldn't be. You won't have to.
How are things working out there without that, your new space?
Good. We're completely moved in. We have tons of room to grow. You won't be hearing from us about anything for decades.
Need another mezzanine?
No, we've exercised the demons of past discretion, and we're moving forward in a positive way.
That's good to hear.
Is there some kind of ceremonial exercise at this business?
There was a moment of science.
Okay.
Flairty.
Yes.
All right, thanks, you guys.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Plus, you got us caught back up. Look at you guys go. You're on many times.
Good job.
Thank you. Liam, the others are out there. Will you send them in?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I don't know who all were, is Kenton here?
No, he's the only one on our agenda, so we get a bonus today.
Well, I think, I think all of us are coming, so I think we still have a couple of minutes, right?
Yeah, we're ahead.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
How are you? Know your faces, but I don't know everybody else's. This is Chris Crockett. He's our, what is your official title? The guy who keeps us out of trouble. He's our attorney there. I was just saying, lead civil attorney.
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, yeah, right.
And Jesse Clark is our PR manager.
Hi. Hello, nice to meet you guys. So.
You're a lot nicer than what we.
Go ahead. We also have Kenton Jepson, in case you guys haven't met him. These are homeless homeowners. And then FCR.
Who's that guy at the end?
Former chief Reese.
Oh, okay.
FC. Or something for.
We call him Reese. Some people call him Philip. Okay, item four, a discussion regarding, oh, Nancy.
Nancy. Nancy is very important in this.
I think the last name is Griggs, but that's not how I say it in my head because of Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
Nancy Griggs is a homeless advocate, working with open city. So, this is a discussion regarding the Weaver Morgan Local Homeless Council. Kenton, you're up.
Thank you. So, we, we put together a few talking points, a few things to, to talk about and everything. And so, I think you were gonna take lead on this, weren't you?
Sure, I would like to. Um, I'd actually, if Nancy's not horribly opposed to it, ask that you share your story, if you're comfortable, similar to what you did with Wake Hug in front of Commissioner Bowles. Because I think it sets the tone and gives a really good platform for why we're here and what we're asking for.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll keep it short. So, my name is Nancy, homeless advocate, but I'm also a recovering addict, and I'm also formerly homeless. It's been sixteen years since I entered recovery. Um, it's been sixteen years since I entered recovery. My clean date is July twenty ninth, two thousand nine. Um, but substance use wasn't the reason for my homelessness. A lot, a lot of people tend to think. All their. The stigma of homelessness is, oh, they're on drugs or they just don't wanna work or whatever the case may be. They're just lazy. But ultimately, I've been homeless multiple times. One was due to childhood trauma. Um, I came from a very extensive background of childhood trauma, including being sexually assaulted when I was eight. Um. Sorry, it's a big story, so I'm trying to wrap it all up into something small. Uh. Ultimately, I was homeless at the age of eighteen, um, for about. A year. I was couch surfing at first, but. Um, as I was couch surfing and, and I did enter into addiction as I was experiencing homelessness. Um. But. As I was couch surfing, I was staying at somebody's house and I was sleeping and I woke up to somebody trying to. Take, trying to assault me. And I started sleeping in a park. I slept on the park on thirtieth and Monroe to be exact, exactly, because I felt safer in a park than I did. Anywhere else and I was too scared to go to the shelter. Um. So in that instance, I was homeless for about a year. About a year and then I was able to get clean, get some assistance, but then. Um, I entered into a relationship where I experienced a lot of domestic violence. There was a point in time where. I, there was thirty days that I walked around with a black eye and a fat lip from an ex-husband. And I entered homelessness again. Because I just, I couldn't do it anymore and I was homeless that time. Probably. Probably about a year again and I. Maybe a little bit longer, but I was, I ended up becoming pregnant and so I was. Sleeping in a motel at the old colonial. It's now like Chipotle. I was sleeping in a motel. Um, and then I was able to get access resources and get assistance and I was able to. Um. And at this point, I was already clean because I was pregnant and so I stopped using. Um. But I was able to get assistance and I was able to move into an apartment in Brigham City because ultimately I had to leave the Ogden area. Because that's where my addiction was, so that's where I knew everybody, um. That had known that I was in a domestic violence relationship that I, they, I just knew too many people. So I ended up moving to Brigham City, got an apartment and I've been clean and stable ever since, but I wouldn't. I wouldn't have been able to do that without any of the resources and luckily I knew how to access those resources. But there's a lot of our folks that don't, don't know how to access those resources. Cause the homelessness system is so complicated and so there's so many different moving parts to it that. Um, a lot of people don't know how to access that, but one thing I wish was around when I was trying to get help was. Peer support or lived experience expert, expertise. Um, because they. I would go to therapy and I would go to counseling and I would try and talk about what was going on with me. But it's really hard to open up to people that you don't know that don't understand. The turmoil and the trials that you have been through, so a lot of. I started working as a peer supporter and a case manager and I've been doing that. I've been doing this type of work for. Of about ten years and. Um, there wasn't, there wasn't any of that when I was around, so. I think having lived experience is so important in every aspect of. This system. Because they know. You know what it's like to. Figure out where you're gonna eat next, if you have to sleep in your, figure out where you're gonna park your car, if you have to sleep in your car. Figure out which parks are gonna be the safest and you're not. Gonna get ambushed or anything like that, so I. Um. And I know that's kind of all over the place. There is. I was trying to condense the story, the full story into something short, but. Um. The point is, is it's important to have lived expertise on anything that has to do with homelessness. Appreciate Nancy sharing her story and I think it's good to ask, I mean. What, what, what effect did hearing her story have on you? Um, what, what did that do for you personally? So let's start, let's start there, commissioners.
Sure.
I. Congratulate and commend you on being strong. And pushing through some of those barriers. And maintaining a better life. I think it's probably still hard every day, or at least at times. But uh. Hopefully you've got, you said you were pregnant. Hopefully you've got a little one in your life now and things are working out better for you. Uh, I appreciate success cases. I, I still, I still have question with regards to cases with the. To whom haven't had the strength that she's now talked about. Uh. I mean, I don't know if you're the one percent that is good, but the recidivism is a concern for me and. And uh, I'm really sorry to hear that it's complicated. I'm sitting here as a, one who tries to be a fixer thinking. The last thing, the first thing a homeless person to me would need would be trust. To be able to trust someone to say, hey, look, let's take in, get you. Your clothes cleaned and showered and get your belongings protected and. Get, and then start down the thing with services and probably a lot of one-on-one, but how would they trust that? One person and. Then being able to do it themselves. I've, I've, I've worked in my mind through process. Sure seems to be a lot of money in a lot of ways, cause I'm thinking about your situation in high school. Now we've got Ogden that has that. We've got Davis, we've got Weber. Have those CTC, they call CTC centers.
Yeah.
The teen center.
So. And then I started thinking about, well, I started to go back to parents. I thought, where's your parents and all this? And I thought, wait, they were. That wasn't a good experience back then, so I'm really sorry to hear that. That's what my, my thoughts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're so far.
Well, appreciate you sharing your story.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I would agree. This takes us back, how many years? Twelve years?
Um, tw- yeah, about twelve years.
About twelve years ago when I worked on the legislation for. Youth Futures that helped those kids come out of bus depots and parks and have a safe place to go, so. Uh, I had a pretty good education back then and one thing I did learn is. And you said the system is complicated, which you're exactly right. Uh, one of the biggest. Uh. Agencies I had to convince to pass the law was DCFS, which doesn't make a lot of sense. You have an agency that's in charge of child services and. And I don't wanna say anything out of turn, but I think I told them this in their face. They, they just don't have the kids' interest at heart a lot, a lot of times. And they try to. Stand behind protocol and what they've learned in school, but it's not right for the kids. And so. Uh, and it kind of comes down to grassroots until we have. Community people that are willing to put their name, money and life on the line to help our kids, the future kids from this. Um, we can't depend on the state to do it. We can look for the state, but we can't depend on it. And that's, I, I think you probably found that out. And, and unfortunately. Uh, I wish there was more. Kids, you're not a kid anymore, but back then that are eighteen, that could see their way through that and come out the way you are today. It's a tough road and I congratulate you, uh. You know, I wish, I wish I could run a bill. I should run a bill that took all that and made all those kids safe. We made some of them safe, but we didn't make all of them safe. And for that, you know, we just have to realize what exists out there and do the best we can. So. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. I would just uh add one thing. Commissioner Harvey, you talked about the trust and I think, and when you talk about advocacy. That's, that's, that's a way to trust, um. Having that experience that Nancy has, um, to go out into the community of people experiencing homelessness and, and. Knowing what they're going through, I think. Is just an innate level of trust because they know that she's been there.
Yeah.
I, I know that you've got those relationships in Ogden City and um just appreciate that word.
Yeah, I think trust is huge in this whole process, I think, as we've indicated and. I think because a lot of individuals have had very difficult experiences, it's caused a sense of mistrust, you know, um. And so that's, I think, one of our main goals is to help. Through lived experience, people to build that trust and show that there are ways that people can succeed. So, I, I also had the opportunity to sit down, um. In working on our strategic plan for homelessness across our county. Uh, Lantern House with several folks to hear about their experiences. Uh, regarding homelessness, accessing the services and everything. The one unspoken message that I can share with you was that the individual said, we wanna have more voice in the process. We want the opportunity to share what we feel should be going on here. We want leadership opportunities and they were very willing to step up and, and be able to be a part of the process.
So I would say specifically what we're asking from the commission today is guidance on. The possibility of fifty thousand dollars to be able to provide some living stipend to facilitate these individuals. Participating in the local homeless council in our various steering committees, um. Having a little bit of experience with the county budget, I'm well aware that you don't just have fifty thousand dollars floating around. Maybe in economic development, you can tell Steph I said. Oh. But knowing that, that's not going to be money that rains from heaven, right?
Yeah.
But from your, your seats of, of government power and where. Some of that funding could potentially come from asking specifically for your guidance in that area. And then just to add a couple more details, um, one of my favorite stories that, um. Former Commissioner Jenkins would tell would be meeting the young man on thirty, I think it was thirtieth street. Um, and, and learning about his story of homelessness. It really was super helpful when we were trying to have a good conversation with Commissioner Jenkins about homelessness. Because he'd had that firsthand meaningful experience. So thank you Nancy for coming in and being vulnerable and sharing your, like, that's very, very powerful.
Okay.
Um. In Ogden School District, ten percent of Ogden School District students experience homelessness within a year. Ten percent. That's an insane number. To think about. Um, so it's not just, I traditionally came into this work and thought about homelessness from my previous. Work experience. I'm like, so Lantern House, this, that and the other is super easy, right? It's the traditional discussion of homelessness. Um, in my new, all united way, we're very much looking at. Prevention of homelessness and looking at those teen centers in our high schools, um. Looking at the family center at Odyssey. Um, elementary school to find resources that. To be able to prevent homelessness as much as possible. With that said, it is a framing of. Families that live out of their van, that drop their kids off to school in the morning. Go and work for some point in time during the day and then somehow circle back around. And fix their meals, whether it's out of a van or couch surfing. Like for me, traditional couch surfing has been. The list of drug use where you go jump from one house to the next surfing buddies. That's not necessarily the case at all. Actually, a lot of families are actually what I refer to as couch surfing. Home surfing, if you will, but they're still going to work. They're still trying to make more of themselves. But the obstacles are enormous. So. Please, please.
So I think one of the things to note as we're asking for some funding to help us. What we're specifically needing is to help an individual who is literally, they've come out of homelessness. Five seconds ago. And now we're asking them to give us their input, their feedback. But they have no money to get to the local homeless council or to all of these other committee meetings. They have no, they're barely, barely stabilized themselves. And asking them to participate and give their feedback without giving them some kind of a stipend. To help them manage that process. We want them to give their time, but we can't ask them to give it to, to us for free. That's what we're asking for the money for is to help us. Fund those individuals to come sit in a meeting for two hours or three hours a month. Or, you know, get on a Zoom call or drive from wherever they are. They don't have anything extra. To help them participate, but we need their voice. We need what they have to say. We need their experience going through this system. To help advise us on the best way, the gaps that are in our system, so that we can provide better services. And really solve it.
So ultimately, I think it's important to have somebody with lived expertise recent over, I mean, it's been sixteen years since I've been. Unsheltered and.
Way different.
Yeah, working in the system, I can, I watched it change twenty different times. So something that worked for me, it's not gonna work for. It didn't work for this person, you know what I mean? Like that, this resource isn't available anymore or that resource didn't exist. Before and it does now, so it's important to have somebody recent because they know the recent struggles of being homeless. Oh, I mean, sleeping in a park is sleeping in a park, either way you look at it, but now there's more. Um. Protocols, there's more city limits, there's more things going on now than there was then, so. It's just, it's just really different now to be homeless.
Yeah, and we're asking them to miss work, to come to our meetings and come help us. And they can't miss those two or four or five hours a month. They cannot afford to miss that time at work to come help us. So we need to pay them.
How many people you talking about?
Um.
The, you, you know, just an idea.
So we have potential. I don't wanna, okay, Chris.
Um, I'll just say we have a potential of having a youth that has recently been, um, homeless. So that's one. Um, Nancy is already funded through the county or through the police department. And then I'll let you.
Action Network is potentially funding an adult position.
Yeah.
Um, but we would like three or four more positions specifically to work. On our various steering committees, right? Like not with just the steering committee, the commissioner Bowles chairs. But also with some of our subcommittees, um, to just make sure that we're understanding the challenges of twenty twenty five.
They each come from different vulnerable populations, you know, criminal justice, addiction. Um, straight homelessness, um, sexual violence. We need all those voices.
So, question if I might. So have you talked to President Nederhauser through his homeless coordinating council? To ask for funds? I have not, no.
I have asked. Wayne for funding. There's not any extra coming into the, I mean, they spend it. And they need two or three times what they've actually got. It's all spent out.
Well. There's a way to make a little more money down there. Um. So I'm willing to give Wayne a call. The, so I understand what you're saying, so I understand the scenario. But there's always a way through a. The committee that funds him, that there could be an appropriation request that directs money in your particular area and you know, you know the route. So I'm happy to, if you have, I'm happy to follow up with Wayne. I, I think if he understood the need, he'd be willing to. Maybe call a couple legislators as well and see if, if, if we need it, some type of appropriation amendment. I think it could, to me, it's not a hard sell.
I think that's a good idea, Commissioner Ford, because we'd be looking at ongoing funds that way.
Yeah.
And not, you know, coming back to the table every year.
That's how I, yeah, you gotta have an ongoing, ongoing money so that you hire that gal today. That she knows if she's still available a year or two, cause you're gonna, you're gonna gain expertise through longevity. And from there being on the, on your committee, the longer they're there, the more they're willing to share, I would assume. And the more benefit it becomes to your entire group. In fact, I got a call in for Wayne on another matter, so I'm happy to talk about and get back to whoever. Let's. Let's give a legislator a shot at this. You know, a lot of times they do something that's right down there.
And we're all happy, we're all happy to come also.
Yeah.
And, and speak to that too.
All right, well, I'll talk to Wayne and see what we can do if we need to meet at the Capitol. Uh, I'll be down there quite a bit in the next, starting probably in November. Um, and then, you know, have you come down? I, to me, I, I just don't see. That we have any, I mean, you, any money at the county in our budgets that fall into that category.
Unless we pulled from departments that are associated.
Yeah.
Like that's the only thing, the thought that I'm thinking right now is.
Where?
Corrections and, um, public, public defender, like taking money from those and pulling it. But I, I like your idea a lot better because it's, it's more of a long-term solution to funding this.
Yeah, I, I guess.
And it can't really be just, sorry.
Well, I would say.
Weaver County, but.
We, we should look at both. I mean, if we've got some, I don't, I don't think you need fifty thousand if you're looking at. I don't, I don't think you need fifty thousand if you're looking at three or four people right now, right? I mean, if we could round up. What, four or five thousand, sweep the corners out of what you're suggesting, which I agree, if we could do that. That actually gives us a kind of a leg up as we go see Wayne and that group is like the county. Has already. We scrapped, you know, we scrapped our corners and came up with five thousand, just as a number. Why don't you guys kick in another forty five?
I think our state really wants to s- see that right now, frankly, it's seems like at a recent uh. Office of uh the recent. Uh Utah homelessness conference that Representative Ellison indicated that there's gonna be more push on the localities to. Jump up and and help and support. And so I know that that's a challenge for sure, but. You know, we're, we're just trying to look for solutions, of course.
Right, and Steve's, Steve's a great resource as well. Steve and I ran a few bills together, so kind of on, so. I I think that you've got a path forward here. And I think if we, I think if we could jumpstart it. We, you know, not. An ongoing or commitment, but something you could take to the state and say, look, Little Weaver County did this. You know, you guys, this is a problem, let's cure it. Let's solve this.
I I'm uh, I'm, if if it could be. I don't want to create any more money out of what we've got for me. I. I don't want to see our local taxpayers pay anymore. I liked your idea about going to the state, Gage, I thought it was, I think it's really good, but. I wouldn't be trying to find unless another existing service. We we could sweep a corner like you said somewhere else and find it. I'm a little tougher on that, I'm. I it seems like our area does so much and I don't see. I see people coming in from Box Elder and even Cache Counties, certainly Davis County, until those guys are willing to pony up. That's where, that's where I'd love to see the four of you sitting across to Box Elder or at the Cache County Council. Or at the Davis Council, because those guys, as far as I'm concerned, are not pulling their load and we're doing it all for them, so I'm.
I just met with um with Ryan Stainbigle from Davis LHC this morning.
Yeah, but he's, he's, you didn't meet with the body of commissioners like you're doing right here. Right? I know Ryan, I know who he is and I know what his position is and that's all fine and dandy. But the board of commissioners like here, the ones that make the allocation legislatively for funds and that doesn't. I'm glad you did that.
Tell, tell me about that meeting.
Yeah, Ryan, Ryan indicated that Davis. Uh give some funding to Lantern House because they recognize there's clients that come from Davis. Up to use the shelter at Lantern House, so I didn't ask him how much that was or what that looks like or anything like that, but.
So maybe that's another avenue as well and maybe we can take that to the state. If they recognize their use of the Lantern House, then maybe we can ask them to to look at their. And I'm just thinking of related budgets and you would probably know better than anybody what budgets in the county are related. Um that we could, I mean, if, if we're looking at corrections and public defenders, those are the two I'm thinking of. And you took, you know, twenty five hundred, that's nothing. It would be easy to come up with five thousand and and if we could get that as a match from Davis. And then go to the state.
Dismissed our Harvey's point, if if we were able to go to Box Elder and Cache, like get all. Four larger commissions in whether Utah together, I think that would also help our. Discussion with the state, correct, Commissioner Ford?
I think so. I mean, yeah, if you could get, get a commitment out of Davis for five thousand or whatever you could do, same with Box Elder and Cache. You know, there's your, if you got five thousand, there's your twenty thousand right there. We go down and ask for a match.
Get some ongoing. Thank you. Could you also ask the cities too? I mean, that's, remember how Ron Layton went, or maybe you know, took it on some city. The CJC is, he made it as a collective issue where each donated so much. With each city participating, it wasn't that difficult.
Yeah, that's a great.
That is a great suggestion. Ron was really successful in that, you know, and and when you, the more you divide it up, the less, the less it is for each entity and.
Well, it is not community.
That's the first thing you have to teach, though.
If we were, if we were brought that little portion and we could say. Weaver's first, everybody needs to match the same amount, we'd have it done in no time and then an ongoing to the state.
What we did was Rod Light and said. Here's the money, we go get, go get a match.
And yeah, we're we'll guarantee the money, we're last money in.
Let, keep me updated on your, if you can get in front of the commissions and Box Elder and uh Cash. Let me know how that goes.
Davis, Box Elder and Cash, don't forget Davis.
I won't.
And they they do give a little to Lantern House, you know what I mean? Squatting little teeny bit, though, not that I'm not grateful, but I just assume giving back their money and have them do their own lantern house. I'm tired of watching those buses pull into Lantern House with people from Davis County. They don't pay their share. So that'd help all of us out, but they don't do their share. I think you're on to something personally, uh it's, you know. Charity at the moment, you have insider information as to what's actually helpful and what's not. I think you're pursuing, I think you're really on something.
Yeah, I I I like, I like that direction. You're gonna get good information, current information. And as long as your, you know, board will take that and work with it, should, should help you.
I think the current information is important too because Nancy's been serving on the the LHC and subcommittees as as the. Person with lived experience and, you know.
Things have changed though over the last.
I I wonder too, Madam Chair, if I could continue. With all these little pockets that in the county, money there, money there, I mean, there's a lot of them. If we just again dump the toy box over and say what's really working, what's not, show us. And then we'd have all this money, we could put it towards things that really work. I wouldn't have any problem with that. But right now, I think we're disproportionately contributing, especially it compares. As it compares to population and other counties. Weaver County is so much, if you look at the amount of money we're spending out of our budget. Proportionate to our population compared to the other counties, I'll bet, it wouldn't surprise me if we're five to ten times what they are. Even twenty. So.
I think you're right.
I think I, I'm. So to come back to this, this hole, this water hole, we're about dry. I think it's about time you. Or sink it, you know, a well somewhere else, try to draw water in some of those other spots. Commissioner Harvey, can I have an offline conversation with you about a state issue that may interest you then, please? Yeah, not right now, we're kind of. You still have my time, I hope you have my time.
Phone call meeting with Wayne that you're, why don't you touch base with him and we'll.
I'll touch base with him and see what his discussion would be. And then I think we, see, I I think they go to the other three counties. And tell them, hey, we think we can get Weaver, but we need, we need you guys at three AM. And get the ball rolling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
You offer your time.
Are you still at the same location here in Ogden? Been a while since I've been there.
Thank you all.
See you, Reese.
Not too bad, not too bad.
Is it busy though?
It has been, but I said it's coming in spurts, so.
Or to complain?
No, really, not a ton of complaints yet. It's been okay. But lots of phone calls, you know, and people wanna pay. They'll use their credit card and pay an extra two and a half percent. Not, you would think not many, but it's surprising. I've had a few today.
I don't do that.
Most of us don't. You could use a debit card and pay four dollars as opposed to two and a half percent of your taxes. You know, one guy paid an extra hundred dollars to.
Getting miles.
I know, but I looked at that and I'm like, those miles do not equate to a hundred dollars in a fee guaranteed.
Is Kim coming, you guys?
She is out of town.
Oh, okay, then we'll start. Item five, Commissioners' Discussion. Regarding the use of reimbursement process with Chris Crockett, Stephanie Ebert and Ronald Jensen. Chris?
Thank you, Commissioners. I asked for that this be on a work session because I received a call from USIP a couple of weeks ago. Regarding one of our cases that we had um made a determination to settle. It was a um uh accident involving a motorcycle. This is one that we came in.
Timeout. Because this involves a litigation, does this mean we need to go into closed session?
No, um this isn't going to be about a particular case.
Okay, sorry.
I really appreciate that and if it does get to that point, um we can certainly go into closed session. Um this is um that case that I came back to you several months ago where uh the attorney had made a ridiculous offer. Decided to ask USIP to have our defense panel defend it, which they did. And we came up with what was a much more realistic um settlement that adequately addressed the injuries. Um nowhere near.
Were there injuries, period?
Yeah, there were injuries uh in this one and it was one that we, um it was pretty clear that we had some.
Out of the.
Liability?
Liability, yeah. So, but what happened was uh Lance, who's one of our claims administrators called and asked me to prepare. The check uh to send to um the law firm of. And I said, I've never done that before. It's always reimbursement, I mean, USIP always pays.
So USIP should pay that first and.
Right, and so I I asked it at Lance to explain it and um. Cause I had never done that before and we've handled, handled many, many cases, so I actually called Johnny and had him explain it to me. And the way that he put it was that.
Is it, is it?
To have um. USIP do the reimbursement actually puts us at a worse position when it comes to negotiating. And the reason why is because collectively, even though we're self insured and indemnification pool. Many plaintiff's attorneys out there see us as an insurance company. And so a lot of times uh plaintiff's attorneys just expect a settlement, no matter what happens. In a case that if you just submit some paperwork, you're going to get a um uh some type of a uh settlement amount. Um to have it go through the county itself where they float the fund and then USIP would reimburse, it could be the exact. Day of uh the check is written, puts us in a stronger uh position of negotiation. I didn't have the ability to just authorize something like that and I don't even know what process we would go through. To float the money, if that's even an option, and then have that reimbursed um. Immediately through USIP, I mean, we'd coordinate all that, but I don't know what kind of policies we would have to draft. I don't know what kind of permissions and I hadn't. Obviously spoken to the three of you, so I asked um USIP to pay that one claim. To give me enough time to actually sit down with the commissioners to see what types of questions they had, if they were okay with that process. And if so, what do we need to do to set that up for future claims? So if there was a settlement or one that we received a judgment in these big liability claims. Um the county would be the one that would issue the funds, pay the funds and USIP would reimburse. Uh USIP would still pay out the small auto liability claims directly so that we don't have to deal with a headache or factor. But it uh that was the position I asked Johnny and I to. Share with me what he wanted me to share with you and he said is really to protect the argument, the county is self insured, which gives the county a better bargaining position on settlement. And potentially in front of juries, USIP is a shared fund that their count, uh that counties use to finance their self insured liability. So it's to really kind of put it off that we are not an insurance, USIP is not an insurance company, that the counties are self insured. Um and that we don't just go out there, don't just settle cases just because.
Do you have to get the check like that day when you said get it immediately or do you have? The ability to put it in and get it on a check run on Friday?
I think we could set it up with whatever your requirements would be, uh USIP's timing um. Think they would really be willing to work with us. I think what they're most concerned about is that the check comes out of Weaver County to. The other party.
So I've got a question in, so maybe I'm just a little confused, like if we've got a settlement, so it's gone to court. The judge comes back in and says, and there's an agreement at that, at the court, or is this a. Attempt to make settlement before it goes to court?
It'd be either one.
Okay, I mean, I can see it. On the second part of that, if it's, if it hasn't been settled by a judge, but once it goes to court and it's been settled. They can't, and and whether we send it or USIP sends it, they can't refuse to take that check, can they?
I think what Johnny was saying, no, they they'll still take the check. I think what he was saying is when the arguments come before the juries. They don't want it to appear that, you know, we're just an endless uh have an endless pot of money, that this is coming from taxpayer dollars from the individual counties.
Well, and I understand now, I guess I'm trying to figure out how that works with us.
Future or for, for future litigation or claims or something like that, or just the one in question?
Oh, not, oh, I'm so sorry, yes, uh the one in question is already taken place, that's all done. It would be for future. For all uh.
Big ones that are like lawsuits.
And we can work with USIP to identify what the amounts are, the threshold, what types of claims they would be sending. We don't have to have an answer today. We can sit down and we can actually make it a discussion item at our next USIP Board meeting, uh if you would like.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I just need to, I I like to have more information as far as when those checks go out and really what purpose. I mean, I understand if it comes from the county, it's probably better than, hey, you've got. The, you know, insurance company on the hook and we'll just go for the juggler. So I understand that, I just like to know when and how we apply it.
I think we can really set up um any system that would work with you as far as when we want the reimbursement. Uh to come in, we could, we'll have plenty of time to coordinate that with each case. They're not gonna see these very often. Um but certainly you and I could sit down and talk with Johnny. Um go over all of this, um I can arrange for him to come up and meet with all of you if if you would like. Um if you have more questions.
I think I understand the purpose of it. I think there just needs to be some kind of a policy on what. Whether it's an amount, whether it's.
Amounts, the timings and that's the thing, I didn't, I didn't know.
Something to say or some steps that we want, it's just set a precedent. Without in being intentional.
Well, and I don't know what kind of procedures you would like to see as far as how the request would come in, how you would document it. Um what paperwork you would like to see.
So they're the ones litigating it, so they know what the amount needs to be, USIP.
Will know well ahead of time.
So would they send us a check and then we cut a check?
I would have to ask to see if the, that could actually happen before. I don't know why it couldn't.
I mean, just that way we know for sure we get.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was worried about is the amounts, do we even have the amounts and reserves to cover those types of things? I mean, it's one thing if it's a hundred thousand dollar claim, but what if it's a six million dollar claim?
Yeah, that's the difference.
Well, and it it did have in um Duchesne County, they were struggling to make payroll. And so USIP had to go ahead and make the payment on that one ahead of time.
Yeah, I'm a lot more comfortable if, if if we know what it's gonna be, let's just have you, and we'd sit down and talk to Johnny, maybe he has other reasons. Have them cut the check to us and we will be responsible to send the check on to the plaintiff.
So deposit it into county and then we just issue a check.
That way we know we've got, not, not that I don't trust USIP, but it's a lot cleaner that way.
Especially if it's a large dollar.
Yeah, but it's a six million dollar, we're going, okay.
And I hesitate having a deficit um when you've got these other bills or the other transactions that you're trying to take care of.
We do have money sitting in our PTIF. I mean, we have a little bit of a delay on getting it transferred into our. County account, you know, but yeah, if they're that big, I'd rather get their funds first and then send it out, you know.
Yeah, will you talk to Johnny about that?
I will, and I'm also gonna suggest to him, if you're okay with this, uh cause we serve on the board together, is having a larger discussion with the board. Yeah, I don't remember this ever coming up.
No, that's.
It's gonna apply to other counties.
We've had a board meeting last week.
Problem for everybody.
And so um I'm happy to actually put it on the next board agenda. I started to explain, so.
I think we gotta put it on the, it'll be the December meeting.
Well, perhaps that means that Johnny could uh draft an uh policy addendum. That we could circulate to all the counties to consider the outline. That we could circulate to all the counties to consider the outlines, the criteria. And we can flesh that out and have something to actually look at to evaluate whether it works with that process.
And I think uh if we get the check first, then that, there's no question on writing, yeah, on on. Well, it can be in and out. Is this one that we're paying or is this one that they're paying? Well, we already know that they're paying it, so and so that the plaintiff doesn't get paid twice.
Yeah, so i- if that's the biggest question, I'll just ask him, can we get the check first?
Yeah.
Well, I think if he, tell him to draft the policy that we go over in board meeting.
Okay.
And one of those provisions would be, hey, USIP faxed the check to the county, the county will guarantee that they'll forward those funds, no problem.
I think that's the best idea.
No harm, no foul.
The interest of USIP as a collective group, it should be the same policy applied to every participating entity.
Agreed. Well, and I don't see some of these counties, not to mention William Emerson Ross is one, but.
William Emerson Cox.
Cox, yeah, Ross is, a lot of those counties aren't gonna have six million bucks.
Right.
In their accounts. So they're not gonna be able to forward those chairs until USIP pays them.
Yep. Great.
So I'll ask that question. We'll put it on an agenda to have Johnny draft up a policy for us to.
I think so.
Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, thank you so much for being willing to let me bring this question before you and thanks for coming.
Right. Let now we send the others in if they're on.
Oh, sure.
You know.
William Emerson Cox.
William Emerson Cox the second.
Oh, is that, oh, sorry, I forgot the second.
Yes, and it's William George Ross. William George Ross.
You're so good on second names.
Well, Mr. Harris. Sorry you had to hear that. A little jaded on all these social service stuff, I think.
How to be eight.
Oh, you know why? Got another one in there?
No.
Okay.
No.
It wasn't all of them.
Oh, just happened to find one. Want to be eight?
Okay, commissioners, our next item is a closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. In the motion to.
Motion to go to the closer session as described purely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your motion carries. Okay, commissioners, uh, looking for a motion to leave the closed meeting and re- enter to a public meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're back in a public meeting. For item seven, discussion regarding state opioid funds via Stephanie Russell.
Okay, sir.
Chief Labley. And I believe, do we need to call these in? We need to sign each other's?
Maybe, I don't know.
I don't know either. Thank you.
I I'm I'm sitting down with the commissioners right now. I gotta go. Jim Harvey's giving me the eye, so, okay, alright, goodbye.
And Jim Fallon and Chris Crockett and Jessica Clark is back with us.
Yeah, I don't wanna see that eye anymore.
This is for, oh, I already read that. Stephanie, you're listed first, go ahead.
Uh, fantastic commissioners, uh, thanks for taking a couple of minutes with us today. Uh, Jim and I were at the Capitol last week and presented. An update to the legislative committee that had given the county an appropriation for the regional forensic social work pilot program. And after that update, uh, the committee chair representative, uh, Ray Ward came and grabbed us. Um, just for uh just a really brief minute and just said, hey, listen, um, you might wanna look into some of the state opioid funding. For this program, we don't have ongoing and ongoing appropriation. We had a two year appropriation. So we've had some incredible success with this with this program. The committee was very, very excited about our uh presentation and the data that we that uh Jim's team had collected. So um I did a little bit of research and thought we do, and I've talked to Gage offline and I talked really briefly to Sharon offline and Jim offline. Did a little bit of research to look at um what it would look like if we were gonna go after that state uh grant. And or if we were going to look at doing appropriation or possibly a hybrid. So I've put together just a really quick little one sheet for you. Um, just some quick background, twenty twenty three, this is when uh Utah passed SB one fifty five. Um, and this basically created this uh grant opportunity for state opioid funds. So as you know, half of the opioid funds went to the actual state and the other half went to the counties. So um this program created, this bill created a grant portal and an advisory committee that manages those funds. Um, and that committee is called the Opioid Settlement Advisement Committee. Uh, they're, they've got some really good strategic areas, which I'm not gonna go into, but we can take, you guys can take a peek at it at your own leisure. And really what they're looking at is uh designating those grant funds. It's a grant program for overarching principles, including prioritizing life-saving initiatives. Using evidence-based strategies, which our program really falls under the evidence-based strategies. Focusing on equity, which we could uh go down that road as well, and maintaining a fair and transparent process, which is also something that we could. Uh, utilize in a potential grant application. Um, so that grant application. Um, is uh there's a process for that and I've outlined that on the back that we could go through and look at. And then I wanted to also discuss the second option, which we were going down that path, which is looking at doing. A legislative appropriation instead of the grant application. Um, so that would, you know, is a typical appropriation process. We'd find ourselves a representative to go down back to the committee. Um, and be able to speak to the program and ask for that appropriation. It's basically the same committee that administers the grant. Um, it's kind of a similar process, to be really honest with you. So I really wanted to have some open dialogue about what strategy you guys felt would be good for Jim's team. And I've got you here lately too, in in the event that we look at something. That you guys have already working on for opioid and us having a match with 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 Jim's program is a benefit. Because for a grant application, they're gonna wanna see our investment. And our investment is is that match money that he's currently getting from the county, right?
I don't think we're getting any match money.
I thought you guys were getting opioid funding.
Oh, the opioid funding, yes.
The county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully that continues.
That would be, that would be a potential uh speaking point for a match money for state.
Yes, yeah.
So we would leverage the the state and the county working together, using their opioid funding for that. Um, which Sharon and I had had a conversation, might free up some of our opioid funding if we're able to get more subsidy from the state. To put towards something else, which is why you're sitting there.
Be and 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 Chief Lady's invited because the RISE program was just that's funding. So I don't know if that's something that we could also go to the state for.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know, Stephanie, what the timeline is on the grant, but the appropriation.
Look.
Seems like it would take a little longer.
The 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 grants, uh, I don't even find any kind of grant application form or anything. I just tried to call. The organization uh that the substance abuse and mental health, yeah. And uh the phone message I got was called during regular business hours. I just called about fifteen minutes ago.
So my thought, Jim, was that we would schedule some time and, you know, depending what you guys want us to do. And I had talked to Gage about this a little bit, about Gage and myself and Jim actually talking to Ray. Getting ourselves a little bit on the inside before we apply for the grant and let Ray direct us towards how to go about. My understanding is that grants reviewed by that committee, but then that committee makes a recommendation to.
To the HHS.
To the legislative committee, which is where we get our appropriation money from. So it might be worth. I think it's worth pursuing, but that's gonna be my personal opinion, is that we look at going for the grant. But also keeping the legislative appropriation in our back pocket for the session.
I think so.
So that's gonna be my recommendation.
I think so too. Um, still Steph, we, when I talked to you last week, it was about the RISE program.
That's right.
Cause the sheriff's office lost funding for that in corrections. Two hundred thousand dollars is what's in their budget that they're proposing, but sure be nice if that came from the state. They have opioid dollars to spend on that.
So that might be something that we put two applications together. Um, one for Jim's program, one for that.
So. And and then there's another aspect, uh, we just received notice that the pretrial release services. At the jail is not, are no longer going to do uh random drug testing, which is horrible. Because that's the thing that keeps these people from using while they're on pretrial release. Uh, they thought that if I use, I get caught and I go back, I go into jail. And so uh we just, uh, the courts just got noticed that that's ending at the end of the month. And so they're just continue to monitor the people, but they won't be testing.
I don't wanna come at the grant program with too many of, like, too many facets from one county, cause we'll get, we'll get shut, we'll get, we won't get considered. But if we can show how we're integrating, or if portion of what we get for the grant can subsidize. Uh, Jim's program more where we can take some of that funding that we're already using for Jim's and direct it back to RISE, we can look at that too.
Yeah.
That would actually be a more strategic approach, cause we're not asking the grant committee, a state grant committee for two grants.
For two things.
We're just asking for one and then re-diverting some of that funding that we're already using over there. So I don't know, what what are you guys' thoughts?
I like that route. I would really love to see the RISE program funded at the state level. And if the best way to do that is to do one application and then redirect funds. That makes a lot of sense.
Great.
You know?
Agreed.
Well, let me tell you, Ray Ward said, uh, when he came out and talked to us in the hall hallway, he said he is not. Happy with the way the state opioid settlement funds have been used.
Yeah.
And so, uh, you know, if we can present to him something that really is going to have a significant impact, like the RISE program. Um, and even the pretrial services, if we can keep the person clean during pretrial services. Uh, and we can get them into a program, uh, you know, as part of their sentence. It's gonna save jail debts, it's gonna save money that way, it's gonna save. Uh, and possibly uh lead to the lower recidivism rate, which is what we're working for.
Where does the money for the RISE program come down, come from?
Uh, they're actually graduating today and it's paused until we can find out funding sources. It was coming through the RISE grant, which was a federal grant.
So yeah, I understand that was federal through Medicaid.
Was federal, then that was.
Not Medicaid, uh, Medicaid was one of our hopes moving forward. So uh, September thirtieth, the RISE grant ended. We uh put in for uh an extension. We didn't get the extension. But the state told us the ARPA dollars were available. We applied for those, hoping that those ARPA dollars would get us through fourth quarter twenty twenty five. Uh, October one, we were supposed to go live with our eleven fifteen waiver, which. ARPA funds gets us through January and we have a better idea of what the Medicaid funds would have been going into twenty twenty six. That came, it kinda gave us a three month window. But September twenty eighth, we were notified the ARPA funds aren't available and we won't be getting any. And the Medicaid waiver is being pushed back to sometime first quarter twenty twenty six. So that basically shut down our RISE program with no funding coming in for it.
Let me clarify what you, let me clarify what I'm proposing, cause it's, it's not, I don't think you guys are an understanding exactly what I'm proposing. What I am proposing is that we go to the state for the forensic social work, ongoing funding. And we do the grant application for that. And we use the existing uh funds that we're providing from the county. We take some of that funding and give it to RISE.
From the opioid.
From the opioid settlement.
The only issue I see with that is did you, you didn't do an application for opioid. Oh, you did? Sweet, then we're covered.
Yeah.
For the RISE, for RISE.
For RISE.
I don't wanna take RISE to the state. I want this handled internally.
I understand.
I'm gonna take this to the state, cause we're already getting an appropriation.
Use it.
And you, and then you guys can re-divert.
Yep.
Your county dollars towards RISE. Are you okay with that?
Well, we don't like this, you got the committee to look at. Is it, can you tie that in with opioid?
How, how to pursue that, oh, yeah. It ties into opioid.
Okay.
RISE absolutely fits within.
Absolutely.
So you've got, you've got a number of allocations.
No, I'm saying we, I was, I'm saying we only apply on the state level for the forensic.
No, I said, you're saying, you're saying make a commitment on opioid for RISE. That's gotta go.
Oh, no, 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 not.
Not necessarily. We're just saying if we get state money for.
Yeah.
For my program.
Okay.
Social work, then we.
Then you can use the state.
That money.
The the money that you use for our program.
Absolutely, mate. Absolutely, yeah.
You're right.
I just didn't wanna go to the state for two or three programs when Ward is asking us to use. To apply for the forensic social work, not for RISE and the other one that Jim brought up.
Okay. Well, I still, I still don't see a problem why you couldn't do an RFA for the same thing.
I think so too. I think we do both.
Social work.
Yeah.
There's no reason you can't do both.
I I think so too. That's gonna be my suggestion.
Different groups look at it, it's not an over, yeah.
I think, and we just go for as much as we possibly can get.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
And yeah, my hope is that would free up some money for labeling.
But I think we, I think she had a great idea that you and I and and Steph, Stephanie. Meet with Ray Ward, if we can arrange that. Um, I got a personal connection with Ray Ward. He's my mother's physician. She's ninety-four years old and uh he's been a fantastic, wonderful bedside manner with his little old lady.
So you guarantee money?
Well, I can't.
Relationship?
I, I, I know, no, I didn't, he is just, he is, he is a very, very caring kinda guy. And I like, I I really like Ray and and.
See the chair?
Yeah, he's a chair, also, and also.
He's out of chair.
Name it up. And he actually ran this bill, this bill, the original.
Who's the senate chair?
Um, oh, McKay? I think, let me double check. No, it's not McKay, it's um.
I don't think.
No, it's um, oh my gosh.
Anyway.
He wasn't there, he wasn't there on Tuesday, but let me set that up.
Ray's good to work with.
Yeah, if you don't mind Gage meeting with us and chatting us through, so.
Someone else will pick up the request for the drug testing. I would sue the courts, uh.
No, nobody's, nobody's coming out with their hands out.
That is such a huge problem.
I'd like to see that RISE program continue, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I can always apply for both. I can apply, I can put a grant application in for both programs if you want.
Well, we need to, so let's talk.
Just wanna prioritize.
I wanna talk executive approvals. There's gotta be other, there's gotta be other counties that are looking at at RISE. There's, I'm sure that somebody's got some type of bill out there that impacts that. Let's find out.
There are counties that have been using it.
Let's find out.
You know?
Keith Grover is the senate chair.
Grover.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Cause I know we had a meeting down in St. George at the sheriff's conference with uh. Two ladies from the fed, one was over, gosh, why can't I think of, cosup grant? And then they also talked about RISE, but we are the primary one in the state of Utah that functions in RISE.
So there's no other county?
I don't think so. I think we're pretty much the only one that does RISE.
Okay.
I'd love to see a grant application for that, as long as you don't think it jeopardizes our.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll talk to, we'll, we'll, let's like.
If, if we're the only ones, then.
Yeah, then it might.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes it helps to have company, sometimes it hurts to have company, so.
Yeah.
If we're the only one going to the dance, let's ask for.
Yeah, and you guys have got such great data to show the outcomes of that. Is there anyone in, left in the program now who's not graduating today?
No, we'll be done officially today.
So it's like a, it's a cohort, it's a whole group that goes through.
Right, and how many people go through?
Uh, right now, we're down to three. There's six living inside the section, but three are, they've already graduated, but they keep them on as a peer support.
Okay.
Um, mentor's kinda still in the facility, but the three that graduate today will go to general population. One gets out. End of this month, one in November, one in December.
Good to know, okay.
And the recidivism rate is, is.
Forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent.
Versus.
Well, they they took the group of.
If they don't ride, they don't go through RISE. So it's forty-five percent if they do go through RISE.
No.
No, so they took the five hundred that they've, they've had contact with in right reentry in RISE. And they've seen a forty-five percent reduction in those five hundred that haven't returned.
Okay.
So I didn't speak to numbers, uh, uh, you know, with all of my population, but over the three years, the five hundred, forty-five percent of them. Haven't returned to.
That's great. That's a good number. Yeah, forty-five percent reduction.
Great.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's a good number.
Well, let's, you and I chat offline and I wanna see what other funding options are available, because that was a federal grant. But we definitely wanna include that.
Yeah, so no reason not to.
Sorry, this is a dumb uh question, but wouldn't it hurt you to not put in both? Because you always had the option to come back to the county with your own funds and evaluate to fill in the gaps, cause if they, they could fund both, they could fund just.
Mm-hmm.
One, but you.